Can you hear me?
Late, and then when you started, you weren't able to.
Can you hear me?
This is Randy, I hear you.
Thank you, Randy. The first, that's the first time I can hear anybody, I appreciate that.
Could I hear you too?
Good morning.
Good morning.
The meeting of the LSU Board of Supervisors will come to order. Ms. Griffith, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Dan?
Here.
Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Ms. Werner?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Armenter?
Here.
Mr. Blossman?
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Mallett? Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Mr. Temple? Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Mrs. Zuschlag?
Here.
Right, Mr. Chairman, you have a call to begin.
Thank you, ma'am. I believe Mr. Anderson has some comments on a person important to the Board of Supervisors. Then we, then we will ask Mr. Anderson to lead us in the invocation, to deliver the invocation and Mr. Morris to lead the pledge. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Robert, I appreciate that. Earlier this week, Dr. Bob Rasmussen passed away. He retired a few years ago and moved to Shreveport. He had a condition that he was trying to find a lung transplant that could get a match. And he served, started under Dr. Kopping when Dr. Kopping was president. And Bob was, I guess, cup position would be like Jason or Nicole or somebody like that to the board for years, really, really nice individual. But he passed away earlier this week. And with that, I'm going to ask y'all if you would to follow me along in prayer. Dear God, we thank you for this day and its presence of all who are here. We gather to share our mutual love for LSU and pray that we make good decisions for the entire universe. Our thoughts and prayers are with the family of our friend and colleague Bob Rasmussen, who passed away earlier this week. May he rest in peace. We continue to pray for those affected by COVID-19, our university personnel and staff, and those on the front lines of this pandemic. We thank you for the recovery for so many medical teams who care and battle for this virus, battle this virus. We pray for our state, our country, as we are one nation under God. We ask this in your holy name, amen.
Thank, thank you very much. Randy, if you'd lead us in the pledge.
If y'all would stand and place your hand, right hand over your heart and repeat after me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both very much. Today, we do not have anyone registered for public comments. So we will head to the committee meetings unless there's objection, I move that we recess for committee meetings. If there's no objection, the board will be in recess. Ms. Jones, would you please call the academic committee meeting to order?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Griffith, please call roll.
Ms. Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Armenter? Mr. Blossman?
Here, 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 here.
Mr. Cox?
Here, here.
Mrs. Starnes?
I'm here.
Ms. Werner?
Here, here.
Mr. Williams?
Here, here.
Madam Chair, you have a question to begin.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. Before we begin, I wanted to share some exciting academic accolades from two of our campuses. At LSU, we have phenomenal board completion rates. For the graduates of our allied health disciplines, diagnostic medical sonography, respiratory care and radiologic technology were all at 100%. And surgery technician and nursing were at 90% and 95% respectively. We congratulate these graduates on their accomplishments and wish them the best of luck as they work in our healthcare industry. LSU has had a big win in November when they finalized a cooperative endeavor agreement with Louisiana Economic Development. LED will contribute 1.2 million and LSU has contributed 2 million to develop their technology programs, which will in turn provide more job opportunities for LSU students in the fast-growing industry. Dr. Helen Taylor from LSU has remarked that LED's investment will help LSU to strategically evolve how we teach and prepare Louisiana students for the workforce, especially in the areas of creative, problem-solving and digital dexterity, which are strongly linked to student success. It will also provide lift through our new cyber collaboratory and Stanford University-inspired idea space to reinforce university-community interaction, especially with K-12 teachers. We thank Julie Lessiger, who wrote the LED grant and will primarily oversee it. She has said that a multidisciplinary faculty committee is already at work focused on curriculum changes to help prepare all LSU students to be successful in the 21st century workforce. This includes infusion of new concepts into general education and strengthening cutting-edge disciplinary fields of importance to Northwest Louisiana. I look forward to sharing more with you at that January board meeting about other campuses. Dr. Haney, at this time, would you please present the items?
Thank you so much, Supervisor Jones. Before we begin today, I am excited to introduce to you two, two new academic leaders on our campus. And I am fortunate to work with many great leaders across all of our campuses and we'd like to introduce a few of them to you. And I'm grateful to the committee chair for allowing them to make a few comments today. The first is Dr. Jared Lawrence, Dean of the EJ Uso College of Business. Dean Lawrence is a longtime faculty member in the college and was recently selected as a member of the National Academy of Public Administrators, a prestigious honor reserved for the top scholars in the profession. And I remember virtually meeting with Jared at the outset of the coronavirus pandemic and asking him to serve as interim dean. He knew it would be a challenge, but he was happy to serve his college during the period of transition. And in a very short period of time filled with many challenges, he garnered impressive and widespread support from the faculty, the staff, our students, our alumni and industry partners. And Jared rode, rose to the top of a very qualified group of individuals. And I'm confident that his exceptional leadership skills and his longstanding connections here in Louisiana will serve the college and the university well. Supervisor Jones and members of the board, it is my honor to introduce to you Dr. Jared Lawrence, our new dean.
Thank you, Provost Haney, and I just, I'll be brief, but I wanted to say how excited I am for this opportunity and really humbled by the opportunity to, to lead the College of Business and represent both the college and the university. And I truly look forward to working with Provost Haney and the rest of the academic leadership on campus, so thank you.
Thank you, Jared. And I'm also thrilled to introduce Dr. Jim Spencer, who stepped in as vice provost and dean of the Graduate School in August. Jim came to us from Clemson, where he served as associate dean of the College of Architecture, Arts and Humanities. And I'm glad he decided to come and work for the real Tigers here at LSU. Jim will be focused on supporting the needs of our graduate students and graduate faculty in their scholarly and creative work. Jim is highly regarded as a scholar in his own right, focused on international urbanization and planning. His experience, expertise and innovative ideas are already proving valuable as we work to, to advance graduate education across the university. Supervisor Jones and members of the board, it's my honor to introduce to you Dr. Jim Spencer.
Thanks.
Thank you, and welcome to you both.
Provost Haney, can I say something?
Yes.
I just want to say, you know, three years ago, when there were no deans of color at LSU, myself and others on this board were very vocal about how despicable we thought that was. And so I think it's important to be equally vocal to note that we have significantly increased that number, including with the addition of Jared Lorenz. And I just want to say, adding Jared Lorenz to this important key position at the university is proof positive that, that, that we can be diverse and also enhance the quality and talent and intellectual pursuits of the position. So I just want to commend you, Dr. Haney, for your efforts in always putting talented people into key positions at the university, but also heeding this board's call to diversify the way we go about educating our students, so thank you.
Thank you for that.
I echo those comments.
And, and again, we're excited to have both Jared and Jim joining us. And we hope to be able to be introducing additional leaders from the different campuses to board leadership. So thank you both. It is also down to business, my pleasure to introduce the first item, which is a request to create a Bachelor of Arts in African and African-American Studies. Currently, there is a concentration in African and African-American Studies in the Bachelor of Arts and Liberal Arts. The proposed program uses an interdisciplinary approach to provide undergraduate students with a historical, theoretical and methodological base of knowledge in African and African-American Studies, drawing from disciplines such as anthropology, geography, history, English, philosophy, religious studies, political science, communication studies, sociology. The need for this program is clear, as calls for understanding and addressing institutions and structures that perpetuate social injustices have increased among our communities, our industry partners, governmental entities and others. And African-Americans represent 34% of our state's population, yet there are no public colleges or universities in Louisiana that currently offer an independent BA in African and African-American Studies. Seven of the 13 universities in the SEC offer an independent degree in AAAS, and one offers AAAS as a second major. Graduates of this program will have many opportunities in the job market, job listings and occupations such as diversity and inclusion. Managers, chief diversity officers and other similar roles are seeing tremendous growth. A recent report indicated over the last five years, there has been a 113% increase in the number of executives that hold diversity and inclusion titles in organizations. And this will certainly only grow in the near future. Over 40% of Fortune 500 companies in the US have recently hired diversity and inclusion executives. The proposed program will be offered on campus and online. The projected enrollment, which is based on current concentration numbers, starts at 10 students, increasing to 50 students by year five. Current students will be allowed to transfer to the new program or complete their current degree as they choose. There are no additional costs associated with the program as it already exists in a different format. And the faculty have the capacity to transition to the full degree program. And the current concentration will terminate if this proposal is approved. I am certainly grateful for the leadership of the director of our AAAS program, Dr. Stephen Finley. And I believe Stephen is with us here today, as well as Dean Troy Blanchard, the dean of the College of Humanities and Social Sciences. And again, very grateful for their support and their leadership, as well as the, the AAAS faculty. And we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion to recommend the proposal as presented?
Oh, move.
Okay, so moved by Supervisor Williams, is there a second?
Second.
That Supervisor Blossman?
No, but I'll surely second it if you need. Somebody did, I don't know who it was. I can't seem to work this.
It was Mr. Cox.
Okay. Okay, seconded by Supervisor Cox, thank you. Is there any objection? Without objection, it is approved.
Thank you, everyone.
Present the next item. Dr. Haney?
Absolutely.
Next, we have a request for the establishment of a Bachelor of Science in Business Analytics. The Board of Regents has approved the waiver of the letter of intent, so this is the full proposal for you today and has been reviewed and approved at all institutional levels. It will be offered both LSU online and to on-campus students. And this degree provides our students with practical analytical skills such as data systems, understanding statistics, machine learning, optimization, computer algorithms, marketing, consumer behavior and big data. Understanding that is key to business areas of accounting, finance, management, marketing, all aspects of, of business enterprises. This interdisciplinary program reflects the widespread applicability of analytics across various functional areas in business. And while LSU A&amp;M has a master's program in analytics and a graduate certificate in analytics, there is no undergraduate program that provides these practical tools. Enrollment projections start at 50 in year one, increasing steadily to 250 students by year five. And this mirrors the current general business degree that enrolls 200 to 300 students every year. We do not anticipate any net additional cost for the program. We submit this to the board.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to recommend the proposal as presented?
Glenn, move.
Thank you, Glenn. Is there a second?
Second, Mary Werner.
Thank you, Mary. Is there any objection? Without objection, it is approved. Ready for the next item, Dr. Haney?
The next item is a request from the LSU Health Sciences Center in Shreveport for a full five-year approval of the Center for Emerging Viral Threats as a center of excellence. Because the Center for Emerging Viral Threats is already established, drawing from several existing labs and centers and has great financial support, they are requesting the full five-year approval rather than the one-year conditional approval. I had the privilege of visiting the center on a recent visit to Shreveport, and it is incredibly impressive. And at the forefront of tackling viral threats such as COVID-19, it will engage in multidisciplinary basic and translational research on infection, infectious viruses, providing surveillance and detection for current and future viral threats and provides cutting-edge diagnostics and access to national clinical trials, education of physicians and scientists in the community about prevention, treatment and the science of viral-mediated diseases. And I did not see if, if Dr. Golly is here and wants to speak to this, but this is a really impressive center that is supported both with institutional support, one-time pandemic-related state and federal support, clinical research, sponsored research of the faculty. And certainly, the 15-year Center of Biomedical Research Excellence Grant has created a centralized hub for Louisiana and the southern part of the United States for mitigation of the current pandemic. And, and this center is at the forefront of that. Very excited for this proposal.
Thank you, Dr. Haney. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mary Werner.
Thank you, Mary. Is there a second?
Second by Richard Zuschlag.
Richie.
Seconded by Richard. Is there any objection?
Ms. Jones?
Yes?
We cannot have Mr. Zuschlag second that motion because he is not on the committee.
Oh.
Okay.
Kay will second the motion.
Mr. Mister Blossman.
Seconded by Supervisor Blossman. Is there any objection? Without objection, it is approved. Next item, Dr. Haney.
The next item is a request from LSU A&amp;M to award a posthumous degree to Ms. Caitlin Lamb. Ms. Lamb was in the final semester of her master's program in Oceanography and Coastal Sciences when she tragically passed away. She was in good standing, had completed a draft of her MS thesis and was set to defend in August of this year. Ms. Lamb had completed all of her graduate coursework and was an exemplary student, scientist and scholar. Ms. Lamb had also been accepted into the PhD program in Oceanography and Coastal Sciences. And there is no doubt that she would have been an exceptional scholar in the discipline. The request is highly recommended by the Chair of the Oceanography and Coastal Sciences Program, the Dean of the College of the Coast and Environment, the Graduate Council, the Vice Provost and Dean of the Grad School and me. If approved, her family will receive this award in honor of her scholarly contributions to LSU.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
Oh, move.
Second.
Moved by Jay. Is there a second?
Second, Randy Starnes.
Thank you, Supervisor Starnes. Is there any objection? Without objection, the motion is approved. Okay, item number five, Dr. Haney.
The next item is a request to award a posthumous degree to Mr. Abir Abizai Revas. Mr. Revas was on track to complete his Bachelor of Architecture degree at LSU when he tragically passed away. He was in good standing, had completed most of his undergraduate coursework, which is a 162-hour, five-year program, and was scheduled to complete all of his final coursework this fall. Mr. Revas was a talented designer, student leader and driven individual. In the 2019-20 academic year, Mr. Revas served as president of the local chapter of the American Institute of Architecture Students, a student-run organization dedicated to advancing leadership, design and services among architecture students. He was a conscientious student, thoughtful collaborator and emerging leader. The request is highly recommended by the Director of the Architecture Program, the Dean of the College of Art and Design Office of Academic Affairs. And if approved, his family will receive this award in honor of his scholarly contributions to LSU.
Are there any questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
Oh, move. Randy Starnes.
Thank you, Randy. Is there a second?
Second, Mary Werner.
Thank you, Supervisor Werner. Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is approved.
Next is a request from LSU UNIS to rename the Academic Student Center to the Dr. Anthony Mumfry Center. And Dr. Mumfry was a lifelong educator, a World War II veteran and founding chancellor of LSU UNIS. He passed away on Wednesday, April 6, 2016. He had many numerous professional accomplishments during his 94 years, but certainly would consider his wife of 65 years, his eight children and his lifelong commitment to the education of American youth to be the most important achievements of his lifetime. And I will turn this over to Chancellor Sorensen. Do we have Nancy on the call? I saw her earlier. Well. Can you, can you hear me? Yes. Okay. Yes. All right, I was muted. Okay. So I, yeah, good, good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning to the rest of our LSU board members, colleagues, Provost Haney, and a welcome to the Mumfry family that, that is listening. We just wanted to make some short remarks about Chancellor Mumfry. We, each of you have been given a copy of an article that was published in the UNIS newspaper that talks about some highlights of Dr. Mumfry's career. But I would just like to say that, and hopefully you'll, we'll all be able to see a short video clip of him speaking, followed by Scott Mumfry making just some very short remarks that how much I would have enjoyed meeting and knowing this, this individual. Recently, there was an article in Entrepreneur Magazine, and, and it was in the November 16th edition of that magazine. And it's an article by Mark Randolph, who's the co-founder of Netflix. And he said that there's, there's three things that he looks for when investing in, in, in a new venture. And the first is the people, the second is the people, and the third is the people. And, and Dr. Mumfry certainly embodied this entrepreneurial visionary spirit of an individual who could come to a rice field in UNIS, Louisiana, start buildings with a couple of federal grants and planted the first 25 trees on the campus, as well as cobbling together a Jeep to go back and forth to the post office that were, was the parts of, of two Jeeps that, that were put together that he purchased for $25. So if Nicole, if you don't mind, hopefully we'll be able to play this video clip from Dr. Mumfry.
What you doing over there? You don't belong over there.
You don't belong over there. I want you to come to this office right now. So I went over there and said, you know what I want you to do? I want you to start a university that might fail. What? I have eight kids, man. And you want me to do something that might fail?
That phone call by LSU President John Hunter changed the Cajun dream forever.
He said, I'm just kidding. He said, I think you can do it. A lot of people think you can't, but they don't think the university would succeed, but I think you can. So I said, I can't tell you today, but I'll go home and talk to my wife and see what, and kids, and see what they want to do. All the kids got around and said, let's go, let's go, let's go. So I wrote the first catalog, which was just an example of what we were going to have. I had to show people something, and that was that catalog I used. In the meantime, I was working with the architects. They were working with the building to get a rendering of the, of the school, of the building. So I had these three renderings and the catalog. And I started visiting the high schools in the Five Parish area with my staff. We met at every high school in the Five Parish and spoke to the graduated seniors. And I'm sure that's what caused us to start this school.
I would like to introduce Scott Mumfry, who is on the call with us. And before Scott speaks, I'd also like to say that also on the call with us today are Robbie Savoie, Ray Mumfry, Terry Fusilair, and Mike Mumfry. So if Scott, if you wouldn't mind speaking to us on behalf of your wonderful family.
Sure. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, first thing I'd like to do is thank our sister-in-law, Cappy Mumfry, who really spearheaded this over the last year, year and a half, something like that, and took the lead on part of the family to see this thing through. And certainly Dr. Sorensen, who picked up the, the gauntlet and, and helped push it through whatever approvals needed to happen at the university level. The other thing I'd like to do is I'd like to correct one of the things my dad said in the video that you watched. I can assure you that as a junior in high schools, living in the same place my entire life, I was not jumping for joy when he said, we're going to move to Eunice, Louisiana. But I can tell you that it turned out to probably be the best thing for our entire family, and certain, certainly for me, because I met my wife there and wound up building a house that we have to this day. So I think the rest of my family would probably echo that and say that that move turned out to be good for us. The other thing is, the, the action the board's taking today, for us, is much more than just placing a name on a building. For us, it rec, it reflects the recognition of his impact, of his leadership, his commitment and sacrifice that it's had on the institution and the many staff and students who pass through that, those halls over the last 53 years. It represents an enduring legacy that will stand long after his passing. And for that, we are eternally grateful. And I can tell you that he would be absolutely overwhelmed with how the university today, how it stands, far exceeded any dreams he may have had at the time when he first welcomed the faculty and staff to LSU-E. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. And we certainly appreciate all of the contributions that Dr. Mumfry made to this university and helping shape what it has become. So, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the proposal as presented?
Madam Chair, this is Mary Warner. I would like to make a comment and also make the motion to approve. I would like to thank the Mumfry family for joining us today and thank Dr. Sorensen for seeing this through. All of you who've had the chance to visit LSU-E know the legacy that was started up there. This is quite an appropriate honor. It is a wonderful time that we can look within and honor someone who did so much that not only offers educational opportunities to the heart of Cajun country and the heart of Louisiana, but now reaches into the high schools in those areas with our dual enrollment programs and the academy. I don't think Dr. Mumfry would have ever dreamed that we would have expanded these opportunities to this degree, now reaching 16- and 17-year-olds and helping them launch their higher education career. Thank you, Madam Chair. With that, I would like to make the motion for this approval.
Thank you, Ms. Warner. Is there a second?
Seconded by Glenn Armentor.
Thank you, Supervisor Armentor. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Dr. Haney, we're ready for the next item.
So the next is a happy item for the board to approve conferral of degrees for the 2021 spring commencement exercises. And all of the campuses have provided their, their spring conferral dates to you in your board packet.
Thank you. Are there any questions? If there are none, is there a motion to recommend the proposal as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Moved by Supervisor Starnes. Is there a second?
Seconded by Supervisor Cox.
Thank you, Supervisor Cox. Is there any objection? Without objection, the motion is approved. And. All right, item number eight, Dr. Haney.
Yes, similarly, we are requesting approval to confer the degrees for students in our online programs for calendar year 2021 and establish anticipated dates of conferrals. And again, campuses have provided their online conferral dates for those who have online programs in your packets.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Glenn Armentor.
Seconded by.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any objection? Without objection, it is approved. Item number nine.
Next, we are requesting the board's approval to provide flexibility in admissions decisions for students who do not have an ACT or SAT score. As you know, the pandemic has disrupted access to test administrations across the country and here in Louisiana, challenging the ability of many students to access the test. And our campuses are hearing from students and their parents about their inability to apply and concerns about not having that score. This will allow our campuses the flexibility for the upcoming academic year to make admissions decisions for those students who have had their test administrations canceled or have been unable to register for a test score, as with all applications here at the main campus. Full folder review will be used in admissions decisions.
Thank you, Dr. Haney. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mary Warner.
Supervisor Warner, is there a second? Thank you, Supervisor Williams. Is there? Is, thank you, Supervisor Williams. Is there any objection? All right, the motion is approved. All right, we're ready for the consent agenda. Dr. Haney?
Yes, so we have today on the consent agenda a request from LSU A&amp;M for continued. So the, the first is a, and I'll certainly let Chancellor Sorensen speak to this, but a request from LSU Eunice to establish the Bro Memorial Scholarship Fund Number Two as an endowed scholarship for a two-year workforce. There is also establishment of the Super One Foods Focus on the Future Endowed Scholarship as a two-year workforce scholarship, and a request from LSU Eunice again to establish the Fritz Lang Endowed Scholarship as a two-year workforce scholarship. So there are three of those from LSU-E. And Chancellor Sorensen, if you want to say a few words about these opportunities.
Thank you. Thank you, Provost Haney. We are really thrilled to be bringing these three scholarships forward. Macy Bro was an Allied Health student of ours. This is the, this is a continuation of the scholarship. Tragically, she was killed while she was a student of ours. She were, was in clinicals at Lafayette General High School. I mean, Lafayette General Hospital during, during the time. So this is a memorial, a memorial scholarship in her honor and one in which we select a recipient every year. The Super One Food Scholarship is a brand-new scholarship this year. It is in the amount of $20,000 from Super One Brookshire. We are very grateful for this scholarship. It will be eligible for a Board of Regents match, and it will concentrate in STEM and business areas, as is the Fritz Lang Endowed Scholarship as a workforce type of scholarship concentrating in STEM, business, all of these new high-value areas in which we can put our citizens of Louisiana back to work. So we're happy to be presenting these for your approval today.
And also on the consent agenda is a request from LSU A&amp;M for continued approval of the LSU Center for Coastal Resiliency, a very robust center here on our campus focused on an incredibly important topic. And also a request for the LSU A&amp;M continued approval for our Professional Sales Institute, which again is a robust opportunity both for our students to focus on developing real-life skills for sales as well as providing support to our industry partners. And then a request for LSU A&amp;M to establish four endowed Superior Graduate Student Scholarships, and also for LSU A&amp;M to augment the Kerrigan Graduate Student Scholarship in History. So we submit these items to you on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Haney. Are there any questions on any of these items? Do I hear a motion to approve all of these items?
So moved.
So moved by Supervisor Starnes. Is there a second?
Glenn Armentor.
Seconded by Supervisor Armentor. Is there any objection? Without objection, it is approved. I'll accept a motion to conclude the committee meeting.
So moved, Mary Warner.
Second, Blossman.
All right, is there any objection? Without objection, this concludes the committee. The committee is adjourned. Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, I can barely hear you, but I think it's Finance Committee.
Yes, sir.
If so, Ms. Griffin, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Blossman?
Here.
Mr. Mallett? Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Temple? Mr. Zuschlag?
Here, here.
Here.
Mr. Brown, you have a quorum to begin.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce and ask our new interim CFO, Don Torres, to present the first item. Are you on mute? All right, we're having difficulty hearing you, Mr. Torres.
Mr. Brown, while we're waiting, I think I was having some technical issues. But I, what I said a minute ago was I wanted to especially thank Ms. Jones and Dr. Haney for their presentations, and certainly welcome our new deans, as well as thank Chancellor Sorensen and the Mumfry family. So I'm not sure if that came across, but.
It did. Thank you. I didn't mean to preempt you.
No. Technology is not my specialty.
Okay, I am live now.
Good.
Good morning. The first item presented for your approval is a request from LSU and A&amp;M to amend the Higher Ed Procurement Code to allow for increases in the competitive threshold for information technology purchases to $100,000 and consulting services to $75,000. The increased thresholds in the Higher Ed Procurement Code mirror the increases provided in the State Procurement Code by Act 273 of the 2010 Regular Session.
Thank you. Are there any questions? If none, is there a recommendation to approve this proposal as presented?
So moved, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Woods, thank you. And is there, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Randy, Mr. Torres. Is there, are there any objections? Without objection, this motion is approved. Next item, Mr. Torres.
The second item for approval is a request from LSU, LSU Shreveport to approve an MOU with Bossier Parish Community College to provide an employee tuition waiver. LSU S seeks a 50% tuition waiver to qualified Bossier Parish Community College employees who wish to enroll in LSU Shreveport programs. Bossier Parish Community College employees must be full-time, and the waiver will apply to a maximum of six credit hours. Full fees will be assessed. This action will assist the community college in their efforts to maintain sex accreditation by providing assistance in credentialing their faculty.
Are there questions? I'd like to make a comment that, like, men, Chancellor Clark, for working with Vipsey and continuing and improving the education in our area. Vipsey is a very important two-year college in Shreveport and Bossier. And by working with LSU to improve their faculty education is very important for the education in our area. So I want to thank him and the staff for working with Vipsey. If, if there are no other comments or questions, I entertain a motion to approve the recommendation as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Woods, thank you.
I'll second.
Seconded by, who was the second? I'm sorry.
Carlos. Carlos Temple.
Okay.
It's Temple.
Welcome, and I hope you're doing well. I understand you had, had an illness with COVID, so I'm glad you're on board.
I didn't, I didn't have an illness, but I was with, with my daughter who had it, and so I had to be quarantined for several days, so.
Oh, okay.
We're moving along, we're moving along well.
Well, good. Thank you. I hope she's doing well, too.
Thank you.
If there's no objections, this, this item is approved. Mr. Torres, next item, please.
The final request is from LSU of Alexandria to approve a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Alexandria Country Day School for continued operations of University Academy on the LSU-A campus. LSU-A has had a six-year. LSU A has had a six-year relationship with University Academy, a private school that operates on the LSU A campus. University Academy has approximately 200 students in grades nine through 12. The majority are enrolled in college courses through the Dual Enrollment Program. This has been a successful venture for LSU A. University Academy operates from Oakland Hall, a building that was not in use in 2014. University Academy and the Alexandria Country Day School have merged to allow Country Day to enroll high school students. Country Day is the premier private school in Alexandria with a reputation for high academic standards. The initial term of the CEA is 10 years with an option to renew for an additional 10 years. The partnership will bring increased revenue to LSU A and additional students in the Dual Enrollment Program.
Are there any questions? I'd just like to comment that business Chancellor Correll on this, and this is strengthening the program there. It's a fear for LSU A with many of the the students obtaining 30 to 45 college credits while they're in high school and and other universities in our state. So I'd like to commend him on strengthening this program and the work that they're doing for our state that supports the goals of our Board of Regents and our education. If there are no other questions or comments, I'd like to entertain a motion to recommend the proposal as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Woods and the.
Ronnie.
Ronnie. Okay, thank you, Ms. Anderson. If there are no objections, then this this motion is approved. And then with that is our last item, and I'd like to accept a motion to conclude to conclude our committee meeting.
So moved.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Move. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Woods, and no objection. Mr. Chairman, this completes our committee work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, Ms. Torres. Mr. Woods, would you please convene the Property and Facilities Committee, sir?
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. We have six items on the agenda today. Ms. Griffin, please call the roll.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Armentor?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Mallett? Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Temple?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum to begin.
Thank you very much, Ms. Griffin. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Tony Lombardo to present the items for today.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. First item is a request from LSU A and M to approve an Act 959 project for UPS replacement and system upgrades at the Fred C. Frye Computing Services Building. The Frye Center was built in 1996, and as such, the UPS for the original portion of the computing services building, which is now half of of the capability, is beyond its usable life. We would like to execute a 959 project, which speeds up the cap outlay process if using self-generated funds. We would like to begin with the design so that we can have effectively a shovel-ready project when we identify the additional $2 million required to do the work.
Mr. Lombardo, can you tell us why this item is I guess the level of importance that we move forward with this item today?
So this item serves to protect and provide backup power for half of the capacity of Frye Computing Services Center. It is a single-point failure that if it fails, systems or half of the mainframe system and the computing capabilities for the campus would go down and have to be run on raw distributed power.
Are there any questions on the item? If none, is there a motion to recommend the proposal as presented?
A move, Armentor.
Seconded by Wayne Bradley.
Moved by Mr. Armentor, seconded by Mr. Brown. Any objections? Hearing none, so moved. Item number two, Mr. Lombardo.
Second is a request from LSU A and M to approve the schematic design of the Mobility Implementation Phase One. At the May 22 Board of Supervisors meeting, approval was granted for LSU to enter into an intense lease with the Real Estate and Facilities Foundation to conduct planning for constructing a project to improve parking and transit options on the LSU campus. The design work is completed, and we are ready to submit the schematic designs as indicated by the bylaws for the first building of this project. I'd like to turn it over to Zach Broussard with Carbo Landscape Architecture and Lee Ledbetter with Ledbetter and Associates.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony, and thank you, everyone, for your time this morning. The Mobility Implementation Plan was a study and series of recommendations completed in 2019 to support some of the planning initiatives in the campus master plan. It outlined a network of improvements that collectively would really transform how people move in and around campus. Recommendations included things like a more efficient bus system, improved pedestrian and bike circulation routes, as well as microtransit options such as bike share, car share, on-demand shuttles, things of that nature. And Phase One establishes several of these components. We can advance the slides, please. The project primarily includes the construction of two transit hub facilities. The Park and Go Hub will be located in the gravel lot between Tiger Park and River Road, and the Union Hub is located in the existing parking lot on the south side of the Student Union. These facilities will be the terminals for a non-stop bus route designed to move people quickly between the edge of campus and the core of campus. Beginning at the Park and Go Hub near Tiger Park, as you can see from the overall site plan.
Excuse me, Mr. Broussard. Can you pause one second, please?
Yes.
Ms. Griffin, can we get that presentation up?
Can we have one moment? We are experiencing a little bit of technical issues.
Sure. Please pause for a second, Mr. Broussard.
Will do. No problem. Okay, thank you. And if you'll advance to slide number two, please. Okay, thank you. Ready to proceed if everyone else is.
Yes, sir, please.
Thank you. As I mentioned, the project includes the construction of two transit hub facilities shown in red. The Park and Go Hub will be located in the gravel area between Tiger Park and River Road, and the Union Hub will be located in the existing parking lot on the south side of the Student Union. And these facilities will be the terminals for a non-stop bus route designed to move people quickly between the edge of campus and the core of campus. Next slide, please. Beginning at the Park and Go Hub near Tiger Park, you can see from the overall site plan that the design includes an extensive renovation to the existing gravel lot. Improvements include new paving, a network of trees and green spaces that also serve as pedestrian corridors, bike and ride-share accommodations, and most importantly, an uninterrupted bus lane from Skip Burton Drive that's shown in the top center. Next slide, please. As we look into the area of the hub building, I'm just going to highlight a couple of key items. First, to the left side of the oval shape you see in the middle of the screen is a bus turnaround. That is the main loading zone, and that has a large covered area adjacent to the building. Just to the south of the turnaround is the ride-share pickup and drop-off zone. You see a lot of ADA parking stalls shown in blue. There are zipcar parking spaces as well as a large bike parking facility nearby. There's also an increased amount of green space around the building so that you don't feel like you're waiting for the bus in the middle of a gigantic parking lot. There's a shaded outdoor seating space, and that space is adjacent to food truck parking, shown in orange, which provides a quick-service dining option near the hub. The hub itself was strategically located in the center so that it serves as a focal point from within the parking area, and the building is designed to be accessible and, more importantly, visible from all directions. Now I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Lee Ledbetter, the architect, who's going to talk a little bit more about the building.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks, Zach. Thanks, Tony. And good morning, everyone. The mobility hub is a unique building type. It needs to clearly express its function to students, and at the same time, it needs to act as a beacon. The students are going to need to be able to quickly find this relatively small building with a very large sight. If you remember the second slide that Zach showed, it's a tremendous sight, and this is a very small 2,200-square-foot building. So students that are arriving by car and parking are going to be able to see it from a long distance. Oh, I'm sorry. If you go to the next slide, please. This is the west side of the building, which is going to employ vertical louvers, metal panels, and a large roof canopy to protect the interior spaces from harsh afternoon sun. Next slide. So this this is the view of the covered drop-off in the loading zone. The 2,200-square-foot building is conceived as a glass pavilion with a dramatic canopy that will shelter the large areas for large covered areas for outdoor seating. There'll be suspended monitors that will display bus schedules, locations, arrival times, and the outdoor covered areas will be able to accommodate two busloads of students, and buses are anticipated to arrive at intervals of under 10 minutes. Next slide, please. This view from the northwest shows the scale of the of the mobility hub as compared to an arriving bus and highlights the modest size of the hub building. So you see, it's really a small building. And again, just highlighting that it will need to be easily identifiable from pretty great distances. In addition to shading the glass, providing cover for outdoor seating, and signaling the hub's location, the folded roof canopy will harvest rainwater and direct it to a rain garden at the north edge of the covered outdoor waiting area. This rain garden is one of several specific site amenities conceived in concert with the new building. So this this green rectangle sort of in the in the left side area of the of the image between the bus and the view is is the future rain garden location. Next slide, please. The main interior waiting space is designed with lots of glass to offer maximum views of arriving buses. Similar to the covered loading zone, transit information will also be displayed on a variety of interior monitors. The space will accommodate up to 110 students and will incorporate flexible movable seating with the potential to be reconfigured to accommodate game day events. This is just something that we started talking about during the initial programming of the building and hasn't been developed yet. But during game day, this entire or very much of this parking lot will be devoted to to pre to pre-game events. Next slide, please. So in this slide, we're looking north to the direction of the arriving buses, and you can see the security station to the left and the leaning rails on the right. The leaning rails are designed to hug the perimeter glass walls, and they'll be outfitted with phone and tablet charging stations. Next slide. This is the final image, and you're looking towards the south entry, which is the arrival point for students getting dropped off by friends, Uber, taxi. So they'll be coming from those doors in the in the back left and coming back towards the the view north of the arriving buses. In addition to the waiting area and security station that you see clearly here, the hub will have vending machines, storage, and restrooms. And two of the restrooms will be equipped with shower stalls for cyclists. So those two sort of hallways that you start to see on either side of the of the plywood panel core lead back to discreet locations for restroom and vending machines. That's the last image, and I appreciate your time today.
Thank you. If you'll turn it over to the next slide, please. Thank you, Lee. The last component of the project, as I mentioned previously, is the Union Hub, which serves as the opposite terminal at the core of campus. This existing parking lot will see less extensive improvements that include the addition of two islands in the center of the parking that form the bus turnaround, a large bus shelter for waiting, and a few measures to improve pedestrian accessibility in the area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Broussard and Mr. Ledbetter. Tony, you have any further comments on this?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Excuse me, could I ask a question?
I'm sorry.
For game day, football game day, will anticipate this facility be used for loading incoming and exiting traffic buses?
Yes, it will. We are anticipating the bus system potentially running on game days. Again, anticipating people parking in this area and being bused into the center of campus. The specifics of that operation are still being worked out, but they are part of our plan. We are also accommodating RVs. This is the existing RV parking lot, so we're making sure to include that. We are coordinating extensively with the Athletics Department in this project to make sure that we're, you know, accommodating all of the things that they would like to have.
Another question is, when when do we anticipate this will be completed and put in service?
So we're in the design development phase of of the Phase One of this project. The overall site plan that you saw was a two-phase project. We're anticipating that the first phase construction will be completed for the fall semester of 2021. I'm getting that correct. Excuse me, fall 2022.
And Mr. Brown, to add to that, all of that is contingent on enrollment and what the hopefully post-COVID campus looks like.
Now, this is needed for the completion of the greenhouse project that's taking up parking space, the parking lots in that area, too, correct? And that's anticipated for 2022.
So the greenhouses will actually be completed for fall of '21. And so it's anticipated that there will be temporary pickup and drop-off measures in place in one of the parking areas on the north side of Tiger Park while this facility is under construction. So those parkings, people will actually be parking in the gravel lots for the 2021 academic year. And then in 2022, the building will be completed, and the buses will actually be using that facility. facility. So we are working with temporary facilities for one academic year after the greenhouse project is completed.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on the item? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the proposal as presented.
So moved, Wayne Brown.
Moved by Mr. Brown.
Second, Carlos Temple.
Second by Mr. Temple. Hearing no objections. So moved. Next item, Mr. Lombardo.
Mr. Woods, third item is a request from LSU Ag Center to approve a schematic design of the Welcome Center for Burden Museum and Gardens. The LSU Agricultural Center requests the board approval of the schematic design for the Welcome Center. Funding for this project will be from self-generated funds derived from donations being raised through the Burden Museum and Gardens capital campaign for the four and a half million dollar project. The Welcome Center will serve as the gateway for the entire 440-acre property that comprises the Burden Museum and Gardens, which includes the LSU Ag Center Botanic Gardens, the LSU Rural Life Museum, and the Windrush Gardens. The Welcome Center marks the beginning of a multi-phase master plan for the remaining undeveloped land at the Burden Museum and Gardens. I'll turn it over to Steve Dumez with S.U. Dumez Ripple.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm pleased to present this schematic design proposal for the Welcome Center. Mr. Lombardo gave a great overview of the program for it. If we advance this slide to the next, I'll start to address some of the details of the project. So the new Welcome Center will be located in the southern edge of the garden core of the Burden property. You can see it in the lower center of the screen there. Its, its location is immediately adjacent to a new entry road to the property off of Essen Lane, which is accessed around a new circle and then into the property across the southern edge. Next slide. So this location takes advantage of a number of unique landscapes and ecologies that you find on the Burden property, from forest to wetland to prairie meadows to the more formal gardens themselves. And you can see the, the location of the Welcome Center there surrounding a new garden space that will be an interpretation of the natural environment around the building. Next slide, please. So visitors arrive at the center. There's a drop-off immediately adjacent with a plaza that is at a point of arrival, but visitors by their vehicle would be able to turn to the right and park in a new parking lot that's tucked into an existing grove of trees to help conceal it from view. Next slide. So the program for the Welcome Center, it's a 9,000-square-foot usable interior program. It includes a reception area that also contains a gift shop, a cafe with covered outdoor seating adjacent to the gardens, and then a special event center that can accommodate 200 for banquets and 300 for lectures. It'll be used for special events and connects immediately outdoors to an event lawn located in the prairie meadow. The program includes expansive outdoor covered spaces, deep porches, and the program is organized to create a new courtyard contained within, which will be that, that interpreted nature exhibit that we, that I mentioned. Next slide. So what I thought would be useful is to go through a set of images that really describe the experience of arrival and visiting to the Welcome Center. So as you arrive by car onto the property, the initial views of the building are concealed by the existing grove, but as you come around, the Welcome Center begins to emerge in view. Next slide. As you come along to the building across the entry drive, and here you can see the wetland garden, a new stormwater garden that would be located in front of the building that collects some of the rainwater from both the parking area but also from the site. You can begin to see the deep porches and covered outdoor areas that are part of the project. As you continue off to the right, this drive leads to the, to the parking lot. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, the, the parking lot is designed to be concealed not only by the existing grove of trees that are on the site, but also by a new landscape. This is a stormwater swale that will collect the water, run it along the edge of the property, which will be landscaped with palmeadows and southern landscapes that are, that work with a stormwater swale. You, you cross across a bridge to a pathway that's adjacent to the meadow that leads you to the building and to the Welcome Center. Next slide, please. This is the entry plaza. This is also where buses would drop off visitors to the Welcome Center. You arrive. The building is raised above the ground, accesses by a set of stairs, but also there's an adjacent ADA accessible ramp that leads to a covered outdoor space for gathering large groups for orientation, which is the next slide. At this point, as I said, large groups can gather outside. There will be some exhibits and orientation for the property. You can see the, the captured landscape that's created by the sloped roof that also collects all of the rainwater on the existing building, or the, the new building, sorry, and directs it into a new landscape feature. Next slide. You enter into a foyer. There'll be a reception desk for ticketing to the property, a gift shop. This image doesn't include planned exhibits that are still under discussion and development that would also help tell a story of the property and all of the, the different aspects that visitors would be interested in once they've, once they've finished their initial visit to the Welcome Center. Next slide. This is a view of the event space. You can see it connecting out to the landscape with a large expansive glass wall. This is a configuration shown for lecture, but as I said, it also is intended as a special event and multi-use for a variety of, of different events and uses. Next slide. The interior of that space connects to a porch that also connects to an event lawn. The event lawn is raised within this meadow and would be able to be used for tinted special events. It's, it's twice the size of the event of the enclosed space at 3,000 square feet, so it's a 6,000-square-foot lawn. Next slide. Visitors can walk out into the meadow and experience this new prairie landscape that would be developed, but you can see the view back to the event lawn and the building. The parking is shown there off to the left, and you can see the degree of concealment we will be able to provide with the new landscape. Next slide. And so this is an aerial that shows an overview of both the building and the landscape, parking at the upper left, meadow and the building at the upper right. And then the next slide, I think is the final slide, which shows this captured landscape, this courtyard, where we would interpret a wetland environment with the collection of the rainwater that would flow from the roof into the space and then back out to the site. So thank you for the opportunity to present the project. We're incredibly excited about the opportunity it presents and the chance to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Dumez. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Grunwald with the Ag Center if you have any comments regarding this project.
Thank you, Tony. Mr. Chairman, we've been working with the architects and the Burden Foundation for some time on this project. It's the outline that incorporates multifunctional rooms and aesthetic design of the landscape there at Burden. It's something that's been in the works for some time, and we urge board approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. That, that concludes the presentation, Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardo. Any questions by members of the committee?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Remind me the budget, funding, and timeframe we anticipate getting this in service.
This is coming from self-generated revenues. We're working through the foundation, the Burden Foundation, to raise approximately four and a half million dollars. This is the design. Unfortunately, I do not have the timeline in front of me.
Well, I certainly encourage you to do everything you can to get this in place. It's, it's such a jewel, the property that we have in the heart of Baton Rouge. It retains undeveloped land that we, you know, have history, opportunities for young people, recreationally, outdoor, and it's such a jewel for our university. And this event center, Welcome Center, would be very much needed and a great addition for those visitors, so.
Yes, sir. Both this and the LSU Hilltop Arboretum on Highland Road are two amazing and unique facilities that the LSU system has. I don't know how many of you have had the opportunity to go out to see the Hilltop Arboretum with its new facility out there. It's amazing. I live right by it. It's a well-utilized facility, so we're looking forward to these opportunities at Burden, which is an absolute gem in a city like Baton Rouge and a state like Louisiana.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? Tonight, I'll entertain a motion to accept the proposal as presented.
So moved by Armitaur.
Moved by Mr. Armitaur.
Second by Ronnie.
Second by Mr. Anderson. Any objections? Hearing none, so moved. Next item, Mr. Lombardo.
Mr. Woods, number four is a request to approve two late submissions to the FY 21-22 cap-out lay budget request and first-year prioritized categories for LSU. At the September 11th board meeting, the supervisors approved the annual cap-out lay budget request. Today's request is for two additional projects to be added to the previously approved capital outlay list. The first is a request from LSU Ag Center, and it's a storm damage project from the Deanley Research and Extension Center, where the insurance proceeds for the damage are $1.8 million short. So with, with the design and, and the soft costs associated with the construction, this request is for $2.16 million. The second item is LSU Health Sciences Center Shreveport requesting $14 million of additional funding authority for the Center for Medical Education and Wellness. $12 million of, of that 14 is anticipated to be federal funds with a $2 million additional ask of the GOB. So gives us seven times the value of our general obligation input to this project.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardo. Any questions on the, on items, the two items? I'll entertain a motion to accept the proposal as presented.
This is Ronnie. I'll move approval.
Moved, Mr. Anderson.
And I'll second it, Wayne Brown.
Second, Mr. Brown. Any objections? Hearing none, so moved. Thank you, Mr. Lombardo. Next item, please.
Number five is a request from LSU Health Sciences Center, New Orleans, to amend prior authorization for the president to determine an acceptable university purpose for the purpose of immovable property by the LSU Health Foundation, New Orleans. This is an amend, an upward amendment from $2 to $6 million as a reaction to the property values that are taking place adjacent to the medical center as a result of the medical center being there and also the, the work being done towards charity hospital. It's really having a dramatic impact positively to the neighborhood, but that does start to affect pricing. There is a warehouse opportunity immediately adjacent to the campus that they would like to purchase, and the details are in the packet. It's 603 South Galvez Street. They anticipate borrowing the, the money to, to secure that. It gives them additional flexibility where their current warehousing is closer to charity rather than closer to the, the new hospital and facilities. Dr. O'Yay, if you have any additional remarks?
No, not really. I, I think it's a, it's a good opportunity for us to tour the area. It's a large area. Part of it is already under lease and would remain under lease, so it minimizes the actual cost of the building for the foundation. We have several opportunities to expand into that area, and we would like to acquire the property.
Thank you, Dr. O'Yay. Any questions by the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the proposal as presented.
Randy Morris, I'll make the motion.
Moved by Mr. Morris.
I'll second it, Wayne Brown.
Second by Mr. Brown. Any objections? Hearing none, so moved. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Mr. Woods, the final item is a request from LSU Alexandria for the LSU A Foundation to accept a donation of property at 5608 Grove Lane in Alexandria Rapids Parish, Louisiana.
Thank you. I know detailed information on this project is in your package, but are there any questions on the item? Will entertain a motion to accept it as presented.
So moved, Wayne Brown.
Moved by Mr. Brown.
Second by Armitaur.
Second by Mr. Armitaur. Any objections? Hearing none, so moved. I think that's the last item, Mr. Lombardo.
Yes, it is.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll accept the motion to conclude the property committee.
Valencia, so moved?
Moved by Mr. Armitaur, second by Ms. Jones. Ms. Jones, any objections? Hearing none. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our business of the Property and Facilities Committee.
Mr. Woods, thank you very much, sir. Mr. Armitaur, would you please convene the affiliated organization oversight committee?
Mr. Rippon, please call the row.
Mr. Armitaur?
Here.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Mr. Anderson? Mr. Brown?
Here. Mr. Brown's here.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Temple?
Here.
Ms. Warner?
Here.
Mrs. Zuschlag?
Here.
Mr. Armentor, you have a claim to begin.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Since the next five items are all in the same template, I am going to consider them all at the same time and intend to conduct a single vote to approve them all. Mr. DeQueer, would you mind providing an overview of the five items on the committee agenda for today?
Yes, Mr. Armentor. What we have are the uniform affiliation agreements for Pennington Biomedical, the LSU Health Foundation, the LSU School of Medicine Alumni Association, New Orleans, the LSU Health Sciences Center Foundation in Shreveport, and the Louisiana 4-H Foundation. As we've done in past board meetings, all of these affiliation agreements are based on the same template that the board approved earlier this year. And this is just, I believe it's the third group of UAAs to come to the board as the various foundations sign on to the new standard template.
Thank you, Mr. DeQueer. Is there a motion? I should ask, is there, are there any questions? Is there a motion recommend these proposals as presented?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Morrow?
Second.
Four seconds.
Are there any objections? Without objection, it is approved.
Mr. Armentor, if I could make a comment.
Here, Mr. Brown.
I'm serving on a couple of the affiliate boards as a board representative, and I think it's a really good agreement that we have. I want to thank Mrs. Starnes and Mr. DeQueer and others involved in finalized this agreement with our affiliates. And I would like to encourage all of our board members to sign up and participate with the affiliates. It's very helpful in coordinating and facilitating business of our board along with the business of affiliates.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Point well taken. At this time, I'll accept the motion to conclude the affiliated organization committee.
So moved.
Richard.
Moved by Mr. Zuschlag. Is there an objection? Without objection, the committee is adjourned. Mr. Chair, the committee has concluded its work. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Armentor. And I want to echo Mr. Brown's comments because I've absolutely seen some good things come out of the changes in the affiliation program. And thank Mr. Starnes for his hard work last year because it is reaping benefits, and that's a really good thing. Okay, the recess of the board has ended. The board will now return to order. As we do, and right before we do, I want to congratulate Dr. Drott his birthday. He is 47 years old despite the fact that he looks 12, I think. But I never want to avoid, I never want to miss the opportunity to congratulate and thank both Dr. Drott and Ms. Griffin. I drive them crazy on an almost daily basis, and they both did a great, great job for us. I like to think of Drott as our own Huck Finn. For our approval of the minutes of the board meeting held on October 23rd, 2020, these minutes have been previously provided. If there are no questions, I will accept a motion to adopt the minutes of the meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Morrow and seconded by somebody, Mr. Woods. Thank you, Mr. Woods. Without objection, these minutes are approved. We have a report from the chairman of the Presidential Search Committee, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone. Nicole is a, okay, I see Portia Williams. I was going to make sure we had, and I see Laurie, so great. All right. I wanted to make sure we had them on before I started. So, board members, your search committee has been very hard at work. We have been keeping a very busy schedule. We have met virtually every week since you authorized us to begin our work. And I'm very pleased to report what I think is significant progress in a very short timeframe. I'm going to end with the search firm because I want them to do most of the talking. So, I'll start with the other ways that we have, other types of progress we have made. The first thing y'all asked us to do was take a look at the organizational structure of the university. We very quickly reached a recommendation that we would not go backwards to a chancellor model for the main campus, but that we would look for ways to build out a structure around the president where the president could be successful. We didn't mean to create a panic among the chancellors, that we were creating more bureaucracy. What we wanted to do is ensure that the president had the resources around him or her to be successful. And there was a feeling that the president was stretched thin. And so, Luke LaBorde and his working group of the Presidential Search Committee have been very hard at work to figure out how to put structures and resources and support around the position of the president so that the president can be most successful and can spread that position a little thinner. We expect to have the final conclusion of that working group, which will then be submitted to this board at our meeting, which is tentatively scheduled for December 17th. So, at that point, you'll have the organizational structure recommendation from this committee. We have also been hard at work under the leadership of Professor Gabriela Gonzalez on a job description for the position, which is, as you can imagine, is sort of the jump-off point to going out into the marketplace and finding a president. And so, that working group has concluded its work, and we actually began this week the process of going out and conducting listening sessions in the community where different constituent groups who have a interest in Louisiana State University have had the opportunity to participate in public meetings where they are listened to about the qualities and characteristics that they think need to go into the job description and therefore that the next president needs to possess. I'll let the firm, search firm, go into those in more detail. And of course, the final thing we did through the leadership of the media staff chair, Mary Warner, was her working group sought out to find a search firm that could lead us and guide us in this search. And the working group came back to the overall search committee, and we selected Parker to conduct the search. We have Laurie Wilder and Portia Williams on the call with us. They are representatives of Parker. I would, so at this point, I'd like to turn it over to them so they can hear from you. And after you tell them about yourselves, if you could also describe the listening sessions that you conducted, because I think that'd be very helpful.
Absolutely, Mr. Williams. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Laurie Wilder, and I'm president of Parker Executive Search. Also on the line is Portia Williams, who's the vice president of our higher education practice. Just a couple seconds about who we are. We are executive search firm who specializes in higher education. About 90% of what we do on a given day is done on a college or university campus. We have four real practice areas. We have an academic practice where we represent universities typically in chair level and above search assignments on the campus. We have an academic health sciences practice where we represent medical schools and health science institutions in their searches for leaders, again, chair level and above. We have a sports practice where we conduct searches in intercollegiate athletics for coaches and athletic directors and commissioners. And then our fourth practice, which represents a small group of what we do, is our corporate practice where we're a generalist firm kind of in the southeast. We're based in Atlanta, Georgia, and we're thrilled to have the opportunity to represent you all in this important and critical search for your next leader. This is an area of expertise that we have in conducting presidential leadership searches. We are all about aggressive recruiting, facilitating the processes and advising the process. And so, we'll work very closely with Mr. Williams and his search committee, who have done an amazing job to date to get ready, really, to launch this search and to get out into the marketplace to recruit outstanding and diverse pool of candidates. A little bit about the listening sessions. So, to date, we've had four. We have two more in the next couple of hours. We have had a listening session with the faculty. We've had two open forums, and then we had one with staff. Today's listening sessions will include student opportunity as well as external constituency, community opportunity. And really, what we've been doing through those listening sessions is talking a little bit about process with those constituency groups, but mainly listening. And they've had an opportunity through the Q and A function to tell us really what they're looking for in the next leader and what are those key attributes. Dr. Gonzalez's group is charged with developing and writing the position description, and I think we all felt that it was very important to have this opportunity for constituency groups to tell us what their thoughts are before that document was finalized. And so, really, what will be happening in the next week is Dr. Gonzalez's group, which is a subcommittee of the full search committee, will come together. They will review all of the information that's been provided through these listening sessions, as well as one other piece that we've been doing. We actually sent out a survey to all the different constituency groups. End of business yesterday, we had about 160 responses to that survey, really asking those constituency groups, what are you looking for? So, Dr. Gonzalez's group will take all of that information, see if the document that they've been working on is void of anything, if there's an area that was missed that's been critically important to the broader constituency groups. And then our hope is to have that document finalized at the end of next week, early the week of the following, and then we will get out into the market. We'll advertise the position. We'll start really talking to individuals about the opportunity and trying to recruit candidates in. I'd say to you, the main themes right now have been very consistent around all of the constituency groups. We've heard a lot about the passion for land-grant institution, really looking for leadership, transparent leadership, who understands the academic community, people who, candidates who can bring to the table ideas as it relates to not only the hard scientists, but to the humanities and the arts as well, and a combination there. Someone who understands athletics and understands Title IX and how to perform in those areas. We've heard a great deal about fiscal, understanding financing, ability to build the relationships with legislatures, ability to raise money. Everything that we've heard from the constituency groups is not uncommon. It's, and that's just a little bit of an overview. It's not all we've heard. But it's not uncommon. We're hearing those things, and I think that those have been very important components to this search process. So, Mr. Williams, I'll turn it back over to you, answer any questions that you might have. But right now, we're kind of full speed ahead.
Thank you very much. And I want to say to everyone, you know I must be fond of them if we're going to trust our search to Falcons fans. So, in all seriousness, I think we are positioned to conclude all preliminary work by our meeting on the 17th, which means your search committee has taken care of all the sort of logistics, nuts and bolts and job description and listening sessions, so that by, at our meeting on December 17th, Parker is unleashed to go out to the marketplace and find candidates for us. So, I'm really proud of that effort by everyone who worked very hard. I also want to say, you know, we're tasked with bringing a recommendation to you, and I think we haven't done our job if we don't bring a recommendation to you that you can't stand on. And so, we felt that constituent input, I want y'all to know that this constituent input is a very important part of what we're doing, because if we bring a candidate to you and say, here's the person the board ought to pick as the next leader of LSU, and it's going to blow up on you because the larger community feels as though they didn't have an appropriate level of input, then we have failed. So, I want everybody to know, and you can hear that from what Laurie is telling you, that not only are we going to find the best candidate, but we're going to try to deliver it to you in a way and through a process that we can all be proud of and stand on. So, that is all I have. I will ask if anyone has any questions for Laurie or Portia. Okay, hearing none. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity.
Mr. Woods, if I could just make a comment. I didn't hear a mention of our medical schools in the criteria for a president, so I'd just like to emphasize the importance of having, you know, that consideration, important consideration in our search for leader.
Sure. You know, we've got Steve Nelson and Lester Wayne Johnson, both as members of our search committee, very, very, very important members also. So, that input is certainly there, Wayne. And if we didn't touch on it just now, you know, agriculture, research, that is part of what, when we talk with Parker, that's part of what makes LSU such an attractive job, is that we have a lot to offer. So, I can assure you that that is being factored in.
And Mr. Brown, I would say to you that the position description that has been in this draft form right now is very inclusive of all of those areas. And I think what we'll be doing with the search committee is providing all of the pieces of information that the different constituency groups have brought up. But more importantly, how do you sell the opportunity? We are obviously in a global pandemic and recruiting candidates who are happy where they are, gainfully employed. Their institutional organization would hate to lose them is so very important. And I think the medical enterprise of this organization will be a key attribute in the recruiting of candidates. So, I think you'll see that the document is much more than the four or five things I just said. I think there's probably about 10 to 15 things that came up through these constituency groups as well. But I think you'll see that there, it's grand as it relates to what we're looking for and how we're going to sell the university.
And I would encourage anyone to participate in our search committee meetings. I want everyone to have confidence in the end result. There are also two more listening sessions, which will happen today. Those listening sessions would give you an opportunity to hear from the broader community what they're saying about what they would like to see in the next president. So, everybody, as always, is invited to participate in any of the workings of our committee. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Mr. Williams, thank you very much. The entire LSU community, the LSU families are very much appreciative of your hard work, your passion and your diligence and your competence, which we board members are quite familiar with. And especially want to thank the other board members that are doing double duty. I mentioned them by name, Mr. Armentor, Mr. Starnes, Ms. Jones and Ms. Warner, and also Ms. Griffin, who does, we all know, a lot of the hard work is done in the staff. And so, we appreciate her efforts as well as the entire, as well as your entire committee. We know they're working hard and doing a great job, so we certainly appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Okay, this month, we have personnel actions requiring board approval. They've been distributed previously. Included in these actions that need approval, there's a resolution to authorize the president and the board leadership to negotiate a new contract for Dr. Kerwin at Pennington. At this time, I'll accept a motion to accept the personnel actions.
I move, Mary Warner.
Ms. Warner has made the motion. Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Starnes.
Mr. Chairman, I can't hear you.
Neither can I.
Ms. Griffin, have we lost our connection?
Never lost our connection.
There you are.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Mr. Robinson?
No, he's back.
Yeah.
Got it. Mr. Robinson, can you hear me? We'll accept your report, sir.
Chancellor Mumfri was the first chancellor I worked under at LSUE. It takes a special person to be able to establish any institution, which is extremely challenging, to say the least. And I would like to say Chancellor Mumfri certainly fulfilled that role most fully. Secondly, I was at LSUE when I was the LSUE representative, founding of the Faculty Advisory Committee, and wish to express my gratitude for all the help that Dr. Rasmussen provided this committee over the many years. Now, the issues that the faculty have, compliance with masks by contractors. There are numerous reports of vendors not wearing masks in and around university buildings. Additionally, some have reported failure by the National Guard members conducting COVID tests to wear masks properly. Secondly, faculty are extremely concerned about the long-term impact of the continuing negative. of the continuing negative publicity surrounding the Title IX allegations. This is confounded by the continued presence of those involved in high public profile positions, including the LSU president's search committee. Third, the faculty also put forth a message messaging surrounding the function of LSU Title IX office is difficult to find and access to services. It's unclear. To be honest, many people would not know to search for Title IX. Until recently, many would not have associated many of the functions of the office with the name. Finally, the mandatory training should be updated regularly and revisited to reflect the serious nature of the topic. As recently as this week, there were some slides with smiling individuals giving a goofy thumbs up with the knowledge check question embedded in the presentation was answered correctly. Silly pictures are not considered with the topic and should then should certainly serve as emotional triggers for some. Fourth, most faculty and students are anxious to return to campus. While there are several vaccines pending, it's a bit unreasonable to assume that everyone will have solid immunity by fall 2021. As such, the faculty request proactive plans to return to campus amid variable vaccination status and continued presence of the virus. Fifth, the faculty appreciate the extension of the tenure clock due to the challenges caused by the COVID pandemic. However, there is a small but significant population that would not have afforded the same opportunities due to their status, including appeal of a tenure decision. The faculty put forth that those in the process of appealing a tenure decision should receive some additional time to achieve resolution as others have to progress toward tenure and promotion. Sixth, one that I got early this morning, a CFA member item on the board could be that, although the interim president provost have indicated that raises a high priority, most if not all faculty and staff members have gone without a raise for the third year while expending extraordinary efforts during this calendar year. Doesn't seem appropriate for some administrators to receive from 15 to 30% equity raises when academic colleagues do not have the financial resources to provide equity raises for faculty and staff. And there's data available on that. And finally, and good news from LSU-UNIS, the classes were canceled so that students could vote, and the SGA then provided data as to its effectiveness. And first of all, they asked, did they vote, did the students vote? And we had 83% that did. Those of the 14 that didn't that they surveyed, there were seven that were too young to vote, one was an international student. Did cancellation of classes help you vote? 67% said yes that it did. Do you agree that classes should be canceled every major election day? 79% in fact said it did. These these results were due in large part because of both the our SGA leadership and the chancellor's approach to pushing new ideas forward, for which I'm mostly appreciative. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor Robinson. The appreciate it very much, sir. The the staff advisor's report will be submitted by written report. At this time, we call on President Galligan for the president's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon. I think it is afternoon, yeah, barely. Good afternoon. I want to start out by providing you with an update on the actions that we have been taking since reports surfaced in mid-November about our alleged mishandling of reports of sexual abuse and violence. I I know, like you and our entire campus community, I am deeply disturbed by the thought that we have failed even a single student by not properly handling a report of sexual abuse or violence. It's not acceptable. We're committed to owning up to any mistakes that we've made in the past, to holding ourselves accountable, and to doing better in the future. As interim president, it's my responsibility for righting any wrongs that have occurred, and I accept and will fulfill that responsibility. I also very much appreciate the great courage of any victim of sexual violence who comes forward to tell their story and report what happened to them. I can only imagine how difficult that is. Their courage is inspirational and provides us with even greater determination to do better going forward. On Wednesday, November 25th, we met virtually with Hush Blackwell, and they began to to describe to us what their investigation will entail. They'll investigate our handling of sexual assault cases we've read about, as well as other cases, and a comprehensive review of our Title IX policies, procedures, and most importantly, implementation of those policies and procedures. Hush Blackwell has extensive expertise in higher education law. Their investigation should wrap up in in February, and once rendered, it will be delivered in a report available to the public. There's a lot of frustration and angst in our campus community and the community at large, and we've certainly heard calls for immediate action. These are important issues, and we must get it right. That means we have to give Hush Blackwell the time they need to conduct a comprehensive investigation. And when they have, we will not hesitate to take swift and appropriate action if the findings show indifference or mishandling on the part of anyone at LSU. But we're not just waiting for Hush Blackwell. We're taking action in the meantime. We're consulting with experts to guide our decisions. We're already working to build initiatives and explore immediate changes that we can implement while Hush Blackwell completes their work. Of course, we will also continue to investigate every report of sexual abuse or violence, and we will hold those responsible accountable. Executive Vice President and Provost Stacy Haney and I have met with LSU student leaders to hear about their experiences and perspectives, and requested feedback from the LSU faculty and staff related to our current Title IX and sexual and domestic assault reporting and enforcement policies. We've launched an online portal to collect anonymous feedback that will help us to identify trends and challenges faced by our students so that we can continue to make reporting sexual assault as simple a process as possible, provide better support to victims throughout, and find ways to prevent assault from happening in the first place. We're also consulting with the Baton Rouge Sexual Trauma Awareness and Response Center, with whom we already work, to solicit their expertise. We have discussed how they might work with us to improve, and we look forward to building on our existing relationship with STAR. We have also reached out to student organizations devoted to assault prevention and victims' rights and advocacy so that we can learn more about the students' experience firsthand. We've issued a memo to university leadership and athletic department staff reinforcing that every LSU employee is required to report knowledge of a sexual assault to the Title IX office, with extremely limited exceptions for those in designated confidential roles. We want to be sure that everyone on campus and throughout the LSU family clearly understands the requirement to report and how to do so, and we've made it easier already to make those reports on the Title IX website. We also addressed this topic during our latest faculty and staff forum on December 2nd and reminded everyone of mandatory Title IX training, which is required of all of us by December 31st. Members of the Hush Blackwell team are with us today. And before I proceed with additional university updates, I'd like to give them, give you an opportunity to hear from them. So Scott, Scott Schneider, are you here?
I'm here.
Okay, Scott, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, President Galligan. Hi, my name's Scott Schneider. I'm a partner with Hush Blackwell, and I'm in Austin, Texas now. I used to live and practice in New Orleans for a long time. And you're getting me right at the tail end of the beard season. So I will trim it down in due course. But I'll tell you a little bit about my background and sort of our game plan for this review, which I understand the significance of. I've done, I practice law now, feels like a long time. James Williams will know, about 25 years at this point. And I, for the last 15 years exclusively around higher education issues with an emphasis on Title IX compliance, and both doing that work in with universities actually doing the heavy lifting of the work and also doing these sorts of outside reviews. I've also taught this as well, Title IX and both higher education law. Don't hold this against me at the Tulane Law School. I said this when I met with your president. I I've worked at Tulane, but I had the very good sense to send my daughter to LSU where she is currently a student right now. We have put a team together, and we've done these sorts of reviews before. I think primarily we all have expertise in this area. I have a couple of attorneys who have worked with the Department of Education Office for Civil Rights, who will be part of this, have, who I think is the best young attorney in the country. Paige Duggan's Clay is my right-hand associate on this one, and we've done these sorts of reviews before. And so we're eager to get started. There there are really two parts to this review, and I think President Galligan did a great job of summarizing those two parts. The first one is a look back at what what has happened and how we handled cases in the past. And obviously, there are some high-profile cases that have received some media attention. We are working with the General Counsel to to start a paper review of how those cases were handled. After that paper review is done, it's our intention to come on campus and start doing interviews. And I think that process, by the way, the interview process will start as early as next week. But there are a ton of documents that that we are reviewing. I view my role in all of these as to call balls and strikes. And I always start off, whenever I'm asked to to do these sorts of reviews, I talk to leadership and say, are you going to be comfortable with, you know, just allowing us to exercise our independence here? And is there any preordained conclusion? Because if anybody ever says there is, I don't do the work. I have enough work to to keep me busy. And the the president, everybody I've talked to in senior leadership at the school has said, you know, what we want for, we want for Hush Blackwell to do here is for you to tell us what happened. And if we've made mistakes and people need to be held accountable, that they be held accountable. So that's that's one portion of our process. The the second portion of our process is is a look really forward. You know, where are we now from a Title IX perspective? And there's compliance, which is is complicated, but is sort of baseline. But then there's what are best practices? And then matching best practices with what the the resources of the university are so that we have an effective program. And so part of that, our our work there will be baselining what other peer institutions have done in this space. What are some best practices that that we know about? And a really critical part of our work in this regard will be going out and meeting with stakeholders, which we started that process earlier this week. We met with members of the LSU Sex Assault Response Team. They were fantastic, but we will continue that process. We recently finished a very, it's a different project, but in terms of trying to figure out process and best practices with the University of Texas. And a big part and an important part of our work was the the meetings with students in constituencies and also faculty members. And the ideas that we received from all of those meetings were absolutely critical in us making recommendations to the university to not only be compliant, but to have a world-class Title IX response team and a prevention programming and everything associated with responding appropriately to sex assault and dating violence and domestic violence. So we're eager to get started. It's a tough project. We're looking forward to it and appreciative of the opportunity to work with you all.
Thank you, Scott, very much. Robert, do you, does anyone have any questions for Scott? Okay, well, Scott, you, we look forward to working with you. We look forward to your findings, and and as you said, you've identified exactly what we want. We want a full and fair, independent investigation that tells us exactly what happened so that we can take any appropriate actions. And we want to be able to go forward and be better. And we're hoping that our work together and our work with STAR and other partners will restore and build our community's faith in our commitment to eradicate sexual violence on our campus. So so thank you. Now, switching gears slightly, I had the great pleasure of visiting LSU-UNIS, LSU Shreveport, LSU Health Sciences Shreveport, and the LSU Ashner Monroe Medical Center over the past month to meet with campus leaders, faculty, students, alumni, donors, and members of the community. I'll say to the the folks at those campuses and hospital, thanks for having us. While in Shreveport, I joined the governor and others to celebrate the Louisiana Economic Development Cooperative Endeavor Agreement, which Valencia Jones has already aptly described. It was it was a great day. Among our other recent accomplishments, the LSU Ag Center received $3 million, $3 million from the Rice Research Board to help fund Ag Center research, including $500,000 for an endowed chair. And the Louisiana Soybean and Grain Research and Promotion Board is reviewing proposals for an additional $1.5 million in Ag Center research projects. Ag Center entomologist Kristen Healy has been elected president of the American Mosquito Control Association, becoming just the fourth female to be elected to that position. The Pennington Biomedical Research Center and the Louisiana Clinical and Translational Science Center have received $1.8 million award from the National Institutes of Health as part of Operation Warp Speed. The funding will be used to address barriers to COVID-19 testing in Louisiana's underserved black communities and to find ways to increase testing. Meanwhile, Pennington's global study on COVID-19 lockdowns effect on our lifestyle recently garnered attention worldwide. Media outlets in 20 countries generated 132 articles on the study, reaching an estimated 232 million people, including today in the New York Times. And more of Louisiana's children will be able to access cutting-edge health research through a $2.1 million grant renewal at Pennington. The Environmental Influences on Child Health Outcomes Grant will boost access in clinical trials involving care before and after birth, obesity, upper and lower airways, brain development, and physical, mental, and social well-being. At Health Sciences Center New Orleans, School of Medicine professor Sun Young Kim has been granted a breakthrough device designation from the Food and Drug Administration to speed up development of his non-invasive diagnostic biomarker, NECTEC, which improves diagnosis of necrotizing enterocolitis, which is a devastating disease that typically affects the intestines of premature infants. Also, at HSC New Orleans, Neuroscience Center of Excellence Postdoctoral Fellow Kondo is among just 30 scientists in the nation to be named a member of the National Institute of Health Outstanding Scholars in Neuroscience Award Program. Health Sciences Shreveport Biochemistry and Molecular Biology Professor David Gross has been awarded a four-year NIH grant for $1.2 million to study how the structure of genes can help protect cells from the damaging and occasional lethal effects of exposure to high temperatures, chemicals, and heavy metals with a goal of creating novel treatment drugs. HSC Shreveport Molecular and Cellular Physiology Professor Lynn Harrison is currently at Cape Canaveral conducting microgravity experience experiments on the current NASA space mission. Students at LSU-UNIS are now able to receive free mental health counseling telehealth services thanks to funding from Phi Theta Kappa, and the LSU-E Foundation has overcome the challenges created by the pandemic to exceed its fundraising goals for 2019-2020. Congratulations, UNIS. LSU Alexandria has begun its search for a Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, who will develop and implement short-term and long-range diversity programming. The director will also serve as a first point of contact for student, faculty, and staff grievances regarding discrimination, counseling, and compile an annual diversity report card by collecting data to assess institutional effectiveness at achieving diversity and inclusiveness. At the Flag At the flagship, work on our roadmap to diversity, inclusion, and equity continues. Our nine subcommittees continue to work. The Provost Derek Rivera, Donna Torres, and I recently met with all of those committees for about an hour each, and they updated us on the progress they've made. We will have a more detailed report on that soon. We have updated our diversity statement for the flagship campus. We soon expect to receive recommendations from our Building Name Evaluation Committee. At our flagship, I am also very excited to report that we have received updated figures on our six-year graduation rates. Those updated figures confirm that we have reached an all-time graduation rate high of 69.4%. That's higher than the 65.7 we reported in September. Well, how did that happen? The September figure doesn't include graduates who left LSU for our School of Nursing, and until their recent graduation, they weren't included, but when they are included, we have set a six-year graduation rate record at the flagship. So congratulations to everyone responsible for that. We are also looking forward, thanks, thanks to the urging of Supervisor Stone Cox. At our last board meeting, we will be hosting an in-person commencement inside Tiger Stadium on December 18th and ring ceremony. We will be physically distanced at all. We will be wearing masks, and we, we will conduct ourselves safely. Our students are now remote this week, and next week will be finals. I just want to say thank you to all of our students. Their, their dedication and their perseverance through this challenging semester has been incredible, and I also want to, as Professor Robinson noted, I want to really thank as well our faculty and our incredible staff. We got through the fall. When, when we were together in August, we had a plan, we had confidence, but I'll tell you, we had nerves and trepidation, but we've made it through. I, I'm proud of the way that we have gone through this pandemic as faculty, as staff, and as students. We did not see outbreaks like some other institutions did. That, that doesn't mean that we were perfect. We're looking at things we did across all members of the family to see what can we do in the spring that can improve upon the experience in the fall in, in regards to testing, in regards to contact tracing, and, and other matters. We know that while a vaccine is on the way, again, as Professor Robinson noted, a vaccine is on the way, but it's not going to be here by January. So we are going to have to deal with the pandemic in the spring. All of us at LSU are planning how to do that, and the flagship, about half our classes will be in person, and 71% of all of our online or remote classes will have a synchronous element. In other words, they will be delivered in real time. So once again, I just want to say thank you to everyone for all that you have done throughout, throughout the spring and the fall. It is an amazing, amazing example of teamwork and collaboration and mutual respect. Yes, we are all sick of this pandemic. Yes, we are tired of it. Yes, we are burned out by it. Yes, sometimes our nerves and even our tempers are frayed by it, but we have held together, and, and for that, I am most grateful to all of you. So I will close by saying thank you and happy birthday to Jason Trott.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, for that excellent report. This month, we have three reports to accept, which have been previously submitted. I will accept a motion to accept these reports.
So move, Mary Warner.
Ms. Warner, thank you. And I'm. Second, Mr. Williams, thank you, sir. Without objection, these reports are adopted. At this time, I will entertain one motion to approve all committee recommendations that were presented for board approval today.
Blossman.
Mr. Blossman has made the motion, seconded by Mr. Armentor. Without any objection, the committee reports are adopted. The board at this time, I want to report on the self-evaluation. The board has completed the self-evaluation. The result of the report was that the board is pleased with the university's progress over the past year, particularly in light of COVID. Next year, it is our goal to start the self-evaluation process a good bit earlier. At this time, I'll give you the chair's report, and I want to congratulate, begin by congratulating all the graduates this December. It's been a wonderful accomplishment for these folks, especially since this year has been made quite difficult by COVID. I also want to join President Galligan in congratulating LSU S on their LED grant, the Ag Center on the Rice Research Super Chair, Pennington LSU Health Shreveport on their new NIH grants, also the $10 million electron microscope facility at the main campus from the Army, and $9 million from the Corps for Coastal Forecasting. Also wish to congratulate LSU A for winning the SenLa Chamber of Commerce Award, the BITZI, for their online nursing program campaign. As everyone knows, COVID has made 2020 a very difficult year, but I'm especially proud of our students, our faculty, and our staff. Everyone has stayed on track, worked toward our mission, and worked through difficult times. For all of the bad things that have happened related to COVID, the resilience of the LSU community has been most impressive. Finally, the board is monitoring the Title IX stories. On behalf of the board, I have the following statement to read. The LSU Board of Supervisors wants to assure our community that we are actively engaged in resolving the recent accusations of mishandled sexual violence cases. We publicly reaffirm our commitment to preventing sexual violence and addressing any culture that leads to this type of behavior, and we support the victims and survivors. We support President Galligan's engagement of Hush Blackwell, an experienced third party, to review past cases for compliance. It will take some time for them to work through the facts. If errors have been made, we want them fixed. If any members of our university community have failed in their responsibilities, they will be held appropriately accountable. While Hush Blackwell's work is in progress, the president is meeting with student leaders and advocacy groups to learn how we can better serve our students in their most vulnerable times and provide better support. LSU will not stand still on this issue. Every member of the LSU community must be treated fairly, equitably, and with respect. The university's missions of education, research, and service require an open and welcoming environment conducive to growth, learning, and exploration. We can achieve our mission only when every member of the LSU family feels safe from sexual violence, discrimination, or any other unacceptable behavior. In closing, we echo President Galligan's commitment to transparency and change. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, our next meeting is on January 15th, hopefully in person. Wish everyone very safe, happy socially-distanced holiday, and at this time, I will accept a motion to adjourn. Seconded by Mr. Morrow, without objection. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays. Thank you.